Yeah.
This has been.
This has been.
Yeah.
And there's a hospital.
There is.
This will be me or Todd that.
For both.
We're here.
No, I think it's.
Yeah, seriously.
Well, just wanted to.
I sent him the documents.
Why is that very old water? It's got. Definitely.
Just wanted you to let you know that you're all live.
Elevator. But I saw that. You know, brain and.
Yeah.
Very much. You know, some school districts.
I did send the documents and thank you.
But I don't know. Just something. I know worst thing. I saw that call this.
Yeah. Who is it?
Oh, let me just share the. Thanks.
No, no.
She can walk down. She can't.
Uh, you see.
First of all.
No, it's not.
That's.
Oh, yeah.
No, it's.
No.
No, that's a long. Yeah.
Did it? No.
Yeah. So was it a small track? So man knew it. That's a problem. He had it.
Mike, I'm sorry.
You know, I want you to have.
No, it's actually out.
My piece.
It's like.
Yeah, it's.
Yeah.
Come here, man. These are three. There's two. Three. Those still some clinics. But if you see. Any direct tomorrow on.
What's that?
What are we doing on technology? Are we ready to go?
Yeah.
Okay, we got. Right, it's.
It's in action.
So they have those little things of shops which is small.
So like the second and the third try.
Yeah, same thing.
It's gonna.
I think. Good timing.
It's.
Uh, sorry.
Um. I'll wait for your cue.
Oh.
Bye.
Okay, it's uh five oh one on uh October seventh. Uh, we're in the city county or city town building. Council chambers uh for our agenda setting meeting. And uh it's not an action meeting, but uh so. Do we need to call roll?
No.
All right, then with that is fine. Uh, I'll turn it over to the city administrator. If I can call on various, I know uh our librarian Jen is not going to be here. So councillor Hanson will do his. The elements work there to read the report. Uh, do you want to go ahead with that first?
Yeah, you want to elaborate?
Sure. Okay. Uh, we have two sessions. The library has two sessions left at the three two one Hertz adult water color class. And you can still attend. There's two left next Wednesday, October eighth, and the following Wednesday fifteenth from ten thirty to one thirty. And Legacy Programming has provided us this month with the title is thing is they brought their songs. It's full music around Minnesota. They'll be here Friday the tenth this week at three thirty. And Pumpkin Fest on the eleventh on Saturday, the library will be providing the mask, making an activity, movies and treats to help celebrate. And they're closed on the thirteenth Monday for Indigenous Peoples' Day. And it's a working holiday, so it sounds like they're gonna be shifting things around inside. And they're sad they have Rebecca's resignation. They appreciate her time and she's working this, so she'll be missed. Job posting is for the open position. There's still one open. It's open until this Friday the tenth. For anybody interested in working for like, you get information on that job from the library. And also, I'm gonna add this myself. The book sale ended last Thursday, Friday, Saturday. And I haven't heard or seen any numbers, but just from talking to people, it was a pretty successful. A lot of people thought good turnout. So thanks to the, for that, to the friends of the library and everybody else that helped out. So the proceeds from that go to the friends of the library. They would, who had heard make grants then to the library.
Yep.
That's it? Well, no, thanks very much. So. Still look forward to Jen coming back one day here, so. All right. Uh, let's see, turning to other staff appearances, uh, let's see, the administrator update.
Uh, so okay, well, I'd really like the agenda tonight. Most of it's kind of routine. Um, old business, there's still that Aurora South Sixth Street East. I'll talk about that a little bit. And so I still need to meet with the property owners to see what might be workable solutions on that. I'll take that a little bit. The warming check donations coming in, that's gonna be a very popular project. You don't have to be on schedule. Um, the warming check, it's gonna be a significant amount. Uh, the concrete they poured does look very nice, so that's a very good base there. Um, finding it going to events, uh, committee of meeting on.
Yeah.
Okay. John Howard here with the attorney. Uh, access a treatment with uh. This is you didn't access the state federal, right? Correct. Your basis. Um. They drag change order, got some from the state on that. The little skirt dish from the western, west industrial park addition. There's been some questions, so just run over the name of those additions. That's what I discussed with the community. Helps a lot that input. Uh, the administrative contract, closed meeting, a very unique case on a city council agenda, something that's closed. Uh, we said, so that's statutory uh requirement. That story um possibility for holding. When you're labor location for the administrative contract. Uh, followed up by things that have been tabled in the past. Um, it's one thing, responsible authority, the bank, bank's authority and committee appointments, uh, which are subsequent to the act.
See, and then if I understood correctly from discussions downstairs, the uh, the front of the table, the ordinance, uh, amendments relating to the light and uh, uh, button filling upgrades.
Yeah, I do want to talk to them. It tends.
Yeah, okay. Okay, so um, and that's. People's yours.
Um, and then I think on the agenda for the council's information, with the spec building coming together, industrial park being nearly complete. There is a lot of activity, a lot of interest from potential tests. The. Not enough access block staff, uh, followed by taking up those sites and walking people through it. Uh, it's gonna be a pretty popular item.
Like you were saying, if the temperature's gone up, it's, it's getting closer to a, a likely tenant.
Right.
So.
We'll occasionally see tenants where there's really kind of high in the sky, but they're actually real. I prefer likes to, to uh separate them into pre-tenors and sun tenders. Uh, and there's been very few pre-tenors.
Okay. Good. Let's see, any other uh business meeting agenda items that people want to talk about? More depth here before we go in.
Okay.
Uh, let's see, Josh, uh, more things to elaborate on for us?
Uh, I talked through it a little bit in the last meeting of all the change order. Um, this just clarifies that how we ended up working it is it's we're deducting the drilling quantities. I worked through the quantity, but it takes to do it. I gotta pump some price from the contractor to do that, so that way there's no scope creep. It's just get hit across the road. This is the quantity we try to do it, then you stay in that hole. It's simplified thing for static, twenty different people to do it. So I just want to clear that. With this change order, is that a chance for it to come this week?
Good work. Uh. Yeah, there really are. If, you know, something of like, for just background, the uh, uh, ordinance, you know, the proposed resolutions that we're gonna table or something like that.
No, I'll talk whenever you want me to, I, I would like to.
Yeah, if we could get the backstory and kind of executive summary, uh, what's motivating it, what we're doing.
Probably just raise the phone out there.
Oh, okay.
You just shoot me a line or whatever you want.
We've been doing this all on you, no one's been super you after.
There you go. Um, yeah, so there uh large majority of the agenda this evening is actually the zoning regulation changes. Um, and then there's two, as Doug had referenced, there's two ordinances proposed. They're both going to be tabled. Uh, and please ignore on the bottom of the regulations of seventeen. Uh, in my head, I was thinking our next meeting was seventeen, so the administrator said seventeen to twenty first. But definitely the twenty first, I've just lost. So that will be moved to the twenty first meeting. Uh, and our planner for opening will also present to speak on, yeah, better uh virtually exposed, uh, to speak on those uh few items. But the first one I'll talk about is that zoning specifically, and that's been worked on for over a year. So this is not the quick by any means, Sarah's put a, a large, large number from hours into fixing this. Uh, this is done from legislation, legislation changes as well as the court cases that came about within the last twenty five years, um, since that's up to date. So this is just getting our zoning regulations up to stuff and uh really just kind of cleaning things up. We also are, um, we talked with American Legal Publishing prior to going through these changes, and there's a chart listed on here. So uh, on our website where the ordinances are currently placed, right now it's in paragraph format. We are able to put this into chart format online as well, so it's just um for the public's eye, it should be a lot easier to find. If I want to build a shed, it's within. Uh, so just a little, rather than reading maybe some pages just to find out uh who to build a shed where. So this is hopefully gonna clean things up a bit there. Uh, largest change I would say for this, just for a noble sake, is we are removing one of our uh zoning categories in Aurora. We're removing what's called R two A and just instead having R two. There were very minor differences from this. Um, and actually, uh, throughout the city, there are no uh zoned R two A and this point. So it's uh kind of a, a really mighty detail that we're switching, but so removing that from our charting vote. That's the largest, I would say, that always removes from most of the features that I mentioned with the word R two A. Uh, otherwise, with that same ordinance that I want seventeen, uh, candidates regulations have to be up to date. Uh, so this, we were fortunate enough to adopt a candidate ordinance prior to the uh Lincoln Minnesota where they see their adopted or model ordinance. So we had attorney work on this, Mike reviewed it, uh, and everything was good to go until legislation changed. So this is us getting it up to par. Attorney Carney has been well aware that this is in the works and that we were going to do this. It does require a public hearing, so the public hearing that we conducted for zoning regulations. We also then held for candidate regulation changes. So that is something that had um really, really minor things that changed, uh, specifically the times in which operations can be open. Uh, and then we had regulated the days in which they had been open, but see, because we cannot do that, so we removed that. Uh, but other than that, our ordinance looked fairly well. So it ended up working out itself that we were going with zoning changes, candidate changes, um, just kind of uh two birds with one stone. Second ordinance, ordinance one eighteen, has to do with the zoning changes. So this is a light ordinance, so it's in our general regulation. So it's a different chapter entirely. This does not require a public hearing, does require two reviews, however. So uh, we are just repealing one section of our ordinance. Mike and I have not met on this, so this does a first training review uh as well. That's why we're postponing this one specifically too. This is nothing to do with the timer. But uh, within our zoning regulations that you see at top within that hundred pages, so approximately two that say. Uh, there actually are specific regulations regarding siding and the siding in which you can put on a home. Uh, that is something that's not in the zoning commission uh throughout the state, uh, throughout the nation. That's something that they regulate, so our light ordinance actually directly conflicts with the zoning ordinance that we're going to adopt. So our thought process was remove that from the general regulation, so we don't have to be going over there. So essentially just taking one way to add it with these zoning regulations. It already was in the zoning regulations, but this is just kind of cleaning up and kind of modifying what we had already, so. Any questions on either of those?
You know, real kudos to you and Sarah, you know.
It really was Sarah, yeah. I'll give Sarah a lot of props. Uh, commission members did a lot of time to tell us what they've seen in the past and um kind of what they're currently experiencing with the future products we have on coming, or coming into Aurora. We just really thought this was the perfect time to get people. Put into, yeah, this beautiful chart, I think it'd be great on, I hope they're excited to have that sort of regional.
Can citizens keyword search our ordinances?
Oh, yeah. Yep. So, yes.
Well, there's a, well.
Yeah.
I love the citizen.
Yeah. But, and uh, perfect timing as well with Iowa. So actually, Jeff and I had met um yesterday or Tuesday, yesterday, uh, with the people that are going to implement the system. So I had mentioned to them, this will be in place shortly, and they had said it's perfect, we wait till then, and so these numbers, and the number that you had brought up, that, that'll be corrected, it's not in this one, but that'll be corrected. But yeah, they'll have all of our up to date ordinances throughout the connecting software coming through, so that's great.
It seemed at the Lincoln Minnesota Conference that what I would think would just be operating in background was center stage, that people were really taking looks at the densities, set bags, all sorts of zoning things. So I'm glad that Sarah, you know, was devoted to that for a while. Seems like it would be helpful to the zoning commissions, uh, if that confidence, if it's up to date on things.
Yep. And lastly, I would like to uh mention the, the agenda was sent this morning then with an update. So the first thing we will do at the regular meeting is we will adopt the new agenda, the specials two, I have on the bottom, and you all speak on yourself. And it is in the folder as well. Yours is good, we, we, that's why we. Not really.
I was thinking more.
No, not yet.
Not that, okay. Uh, other questions on uh zoning issues?
Yep.
Let's see, so the attorney, uh, what's, what's in the hopper?
Just what the administrator Jacobson indicated, the resolution was just sort of prosecuting attorney and me to get access to DCA records, Department of Public Safety. It's uh, sent out by Bill to the staff to the rubber stamp, and if we all can get that kind of a lot of access.
And it, we've already had the, was it just re-up there?
It's every five years, or five years, and so they, they pop up, they call us and say, you know, here's the contract, gotta get it with me.
Good.
That's all I have.
Any other property transactions or anything that are dealing with legal matters, or I think we're up to date there.
As far as I am, I think that, no.
Okay. Let's see, so the administrator, anything they've left unaddressed or nothing else? All right, well, this could be a moment we can actually adjourn early.
I'm gonna say one more thing, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I actually.
Wouldn't you miss about.
From the lips, and I shouldn't do that. So, uh, the last thing I wanted to mention was the keys. So uh, looks really great on the outside. Uh, looks really good on the inside if you squint. So if, it's missing a lot of pieces right now, so it's scheduled out, uh, final punch, let's walk through first day, and it is not done. So uh, super unfortunate for the finding of that, you know, we had for tomorrow. So uh, I spoke with Jeff, I mean, right before the meeting, but ultimately we're going to have to cancel that. Uh, I really wanted councillor to work through that before Pumpkin Fest. Uh, that was really something I really wanted, uh, but unfortunately we cannot have that happen. They will be working, I don't know, tomorrow, um, but Thursday and Friday, so it would not end up working out for us to be able to get it done. So unfortunately, we'll have to do something different, but the, if you'd like to see the key signs the first time, you can see with a bunch of vendors in there, I have Pumpkin Fest on October eleventh.
So we'll be ready for vendors on Saturday.
I am saying to them, it will be ready on October eleventh.
It'll be a couple of days.
But it'll look like lipstick on, and that is my, so hopefully hold up, get it up. So they're not getting up, so uh, it should be, yes, I mean, it should, they know that it was a hard day on a Saturday. So that's gonna get them.
Yeah.
Like.
And maybe we could, you know, with the uh, hot like a work event coming up later in the month.
Yep.
Maybe we could pre, precede that a little bit with like a ribbon cutting and invite, that'll be another excitement for the community to come into that meeting.
Yeah, hopefully the kind of with the signing of the community, um, having our hushful word, I'll tell them about the communities first of all. Yeah. I'd like to, councillor Matt, I have to see it thoroughly, and we'll walk through, kind of talk about what we changed and the updates, even exteriors, that should be really for the long-term, that should really be beneficial.
On the industrial park, will we kind of waiting, or I mean, is there a possibility of, does it need a tenant so ripe that before, because at some point, we, one would invite the public in, right, to the spec building? To see the, the product or something, I'm just wondering when and how we should handle that. Obviously, with the ideal, if we had a tenant, then that could be part of sort of the ceremony of announcement.
I think you could step that up, but they'd be.
You think it's premature, or they still have a lot of work to do?
No, they're blacktopping today.
Yeah.
Publicity approach.
And so, and turn like.
Yeah, they're blacktopping that.
No, and that's kind of, but later in the month.
Especially.
Go ahead, try it.
Yeah.
Deal with it. Just so we have it on the radar, is there anything still in there?
What is, do you have approximately, have you, you know, if they're not talking?
I think this week, definitely, yeah. So guy in your car is pretty hot and dry, so if we want to take pictures of ours, so we can, I'm gonna need to, so. Done, done, yeah, I work for a little bit, I'll, that's just some close stuff, but things. Paving is kind of the last big work still by it. Seating is important too.
They're leaving it.
Well, we want to get it stabilized, they gotta get it down. Um, honestly, hopefully nothing grows until next year. If anything, that's already now probably.
Is that north, Holy Pond, is that draining or is that just gonna get a, a small hole?
Yeah, it uh, so the storm sewer comes up the road, so it comes up from the south pond, so that's where it penetrates that pond. So all the water that goes to the north pond actually goes to.
The south pond.
Well, so we needed the dirt, um, it also sets up the rest of the site for itself.
Yeah.
Do we need the treatment for the building as it's now built? But if we don't finish all the development, they don't have to build somewhere.
If we have any uh update on, we're applying that, trying to be with us, you know, to the uh individual, uh.
Yeah, the warrant.
Warrant, individual.
Yeah, I, so we're, we're near completion on industrial park. Uh, we submitted a plot back to the county, so they've given us comments in August, we can go and track them, like, so like, anything that's fine. So no problem, probably have a few miners we can get again off of work.
Okay, Mr. Warren, you said.
Yeah.
He's like always got, he's done all the dirt work himself, and that's.
He did, did kill these steps to that one.
Yeah.
So right now.
Not very far, but yeah, they're there.
They're there under what, a right of entry type of uh agreement or some kind of a.
Very easy, sure. The side access agreement?
So.
That was Joel, that was Joel, but he bet that, uh, nine six percent probably were in that treatment, so it looks very similar.
You know, it's pretty.
And that's the EDA, it's not, but that's, yes.
No, but the EDA, these are press that.
Yes, and uh.
Change.
Attorney Carney did bring up that, that will require a public hearing, wanting to do that, so, yes, probably.
Well, good, so they're actually reaching more than that. High in the sky, dimensions, it's worth. All right, so five twenty-three, any more matters to address? Uh, being done, I guess we'll adjourn our agenda setting meeting.
You decided to move agenda, she had planned for me.
I'm.
Okay, trigger.
So councillor has to make some motion to a jury and uh, uh, council request supports, uh, it's in the discussion, all those favors A I. I post, I understand a jury for a few minutes.
Yeah.
Welcome you land, let's go, what's, what's burning here, what's, what's going on?
It's good. We got words from everybody's face.
Have you been in the building yet? I, no, I have not been in the building yet. I will get there sometime.
Did you get a warrant short?
Yeah.
That should be, if they're going on right now, I'll have to be there shortly.
Okay. Are you still, you have family at the Sunday tour, you mean, that's, have done doing it for the Pumpkin Fest or?
Yeah, we're still planning to give tours, Pumpkin Fest. Right, for the Sunday.
You said something about Celebrate Aurora coming in there to help, uh, I don't think we mentioned that at our Celebrate Aurora meeting. I don't know, but I, now you might have gotten in late or something, but uh, we're sure gonna have some people in there.
Yeah, cause Celebrate Aurora was planning to come through and to help.
Yeah. If you got, well, it, all I contest was, which fortunately, the meeting I went to, it was not brought out, so. But I don't, I don't know if there are any things going on, but the, every, the Celebrate Aurora crews are getting together, uh, you know, on Friday for a lot of prep work and stuff anyway, so. So, and that'll be mainly at the Centered Communities Center.
Yeah, going through the alleys.
Yeah, I think it's. So, Amber Door, I think you have everything.
Think you can do it.
We probably already inside working, yeah. Our uh, contract came in early, we're gonna work a lot of double shift.
Even if wind's on, you just can use two. All your gun, like, we still are.
It's.
Of course, got a ball right there.
Yeah.
Good for you.
Yeah.
We had.
In my yard.
The only one over there.
Okay, so we're probably, it's always the.
I like that. Um, let's see if they're. Am I?
I thought.
Yeah.
I sent it to, to type it, just looking it up.
Somebody just.
Even brought a log out.
We probably luckier with this one.
Probably.
Just hitting the arrows. You being a silo, it's raining.
Not a pool, but it's like. Well, the mayor of the community as well.
Speaking.
It's during the. We're here after.
I said, I don't.
I guess.
Sometimes. No, no. It's probably, and, and, like, the same.
Yeah. I don't have a gag, but I think all the meetings are worth it, and, uh, we think water. So, five thirty-one, on, uh, Tuesday, October, October seventh, uh, we're at the committee, uh, the city hall, and in the city council chambers, and this is our official first meeting of the month, so, ask for a roll call, please.
Crater?
Here.
Berquist? Here. Hanson?
Here.
Hess?
Here.
McCaslin?
We have a full council present, could we stand for the pledge of which?
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America, and to the Republic of America, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Going back to the agenda, we're at, uh, agenda four, the consent agenda, this is for the benefit of the public, these are the, uh, items on the irregular agenda that are not anticipated to be controversial, uh, some cases, routine, appropriate events and correspondence, and, uh, unless individual council members ask, and something withdrawn from the consent agenda, uh, we normally adopt those in bulk. So, uh, does anyone have any item they want removed from the, uh, consent agenda? Oh.
Yeah, oh, that's.
That's right, very good, council break voice, again, break voice.
I'll make a motion to drop, drop the new agenda.
Okay, and there's support for the council request, so, uh, the council announced its supports, and, uh, this is to add the additional agenda item that, uh, that the clerk had referred to earlier, any questions on what action we're taking, so if not, all those who can say aye, 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 post. Uh, we have the, uh, updated agenda adopted, and, uh, if that doesn't in some way invalidate our prior action, I think we're okay. So, uh, let's see, consent agenda again, I think we're, we had a, didn't we have a motion, and, uh, support on that, or not?
Only for movement.
All right, moved by councillor Hess, supported by councillor Hanson to adopt the consent agenda, and, uh, any further discussion on any items, if not, all those who can say aye, 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 post. Consent agenda is adopted. Uh, let's see, appearances, uh, this is the time when the public can comment, you are, do you, uh, have any, uh, matters that you want to address to the council?
I do, but we're also on the agenda, running the agenda.
Okay.
Which, which do you prefer?
All right, we'll do, we'll do that at the other part of the agenda, all right, um, Cheryl, or, any? Okay, just, all right, and, uh, we don't have any one online, and, uh, hopefully then group on, so, um, we've had a report from staff members, previous agenda setting, uh, session, we'll have additions to that, and, all right, so, um, moving then to reports from councillors, uh, councillor Berquist.
Um, okay. Have the fire department, for example, um, they did conduct a successful training run at the end of September, um, if you ask with the cooler weather, that everybody kind of be mindful neighbors and smoke, throwing backyard fires, now that we're back to that kind of people, um, don't burn trash, leaves, dirt waste, everything of that nature. They're still looking for volunteers for the fire department, as always, um, if anybody would be interested in any of that, I highly encourage you to reach out to them, they're a really quick group of guys, a very needed service for our community, um, other than that, just reminded that, uh, the range association of realtors is having their, and fireways is having that meeting in Quail Lake on Saturday as well, for, to go over well-being for prisoners and documentation to ensure that it's, if that's what you're interested in, that's all.
Okay, thank you, councillor. Uh, councillor McCaslin?
Yeah, a couple of things, uh, on the park board, um, members of the, uh, park board, including myself, have received complaints regarding, uh, pet waste, uh, in Pineville Park, where people are taking their dogs to run and such, and primarily, some of them are in the, uh, ice enclosure, uh, others are at the ball field, and we've had some people, uh, who have been playing softball this summer, uh, and the people who've actually, um, you know, gotten some of these feces on them, so, uh, Public Works has put up, uh, pet waste signs, there's a fine now on twenty-five dollars, up to two hundred dollars, if you don't pick up after your pet, and if you're caught, and, uh, the East Range police have also been, uh, notified, so they'll be monitoring the situation, uh, we see that from time to time, so, just asking people, uh, who do have pets, to just, uh, pick up after your pet, and then it'll solve the problem. Um, obviously, I don't know if everybody knows, but the cement has been poured through the warming shack, as we talked about earlier, um, hopefully in the next, uh, several weeks, uh, you know, please should come back with a crew and frame the building, uh, that's supposed to happen, uh, before the end of, uh, November, if, if that would be done, so, we're waiting on, on news for when that's going to happen. As far as from the H R A, uh, we had a meeting with, uh, First Great Market, uh, last week, uh, it, it is progressing well, I turned it, uh, I would encourage all citizens who are coming to the pumpkin fest to head north, uh, North Main, um, the ability to open house, uh, for, uh, uh, people who are interested, the lower right next to the water, for the surrounding area, to tour, uh, what they've done, uh, we have accomplished, uh, quite a bit so far, uh, with more to come, so, thanks for coming in to town. And then finally, I just want to thank, uh, Public Works for, uh, redoing the all of the park signs, uh, they took them down, um, and, uh, put up new park signs, whether it be sunset, or whether it be, you stay in parks, and that sort of thing, shall act on, and they will, they will do the next, so, thanks for doing it.
Thank you, councillor Hanson.
We had a meeting this morning of a, a new committee, through the H R A, they, they, uh, engaged with North Shore Development for a one-year period of time, which, it was a very interesting meeting, they, they bring, they've done it already, done extensive studies on the housing situation, they call it that, you know, you know, in Aurora, and it includes the, the needs, the wants, everything in between, but they do come, give us a lot of experience, they work all up and down, all of these, uh, part of the state. They gave us a lot of, a lot of good input, the problems, the reality of the situation, um, some things not so, even nice to hear, but it, it also gives us possibilities and a lot, think about, they'll be working at, at no cost to the city, they've been working with the Aurora for a year, so, hopefully in a year's time, we can, you know, get some things accomplished, well, like, as far as housing.
Yeah.
The furniture. Yep, and another thing, on my walks, I've noticed that there's been some real good, a good start on clearing the ski trails for the, for people, uh, up on the north side of the pit. It's all volunteer work, so, and I just want to throw a pitch out there, if anybody's a skier, or somebody likes one of the quality time in the woods with some good people, talk to councillor McCaslin, so I'm sure he'll hand you a tool, give you something to do. Show up at noon on Wednesday. No, we're going to be meeting right by, uh, right behind the school. It's all volunteer, and then that's the kind of thing that, if you like to ski, thank one of these people if you can't help it, because they're, you know, for people that they don't even know, in a lot of cases.
You know, like, those on up there, it's, it's in the high-profile position, and then it's, it's, it's very valuable, so, we're happy to get them, the crew, uh, to listen to you around, uh, televised meeting. So, councillor Hess, we ain't got too much, the only thing is, uh, a lot of efforts we wanted filled in, uh, they didn't get, they drove dirt, eat it by the, and contractors, I tell them, so, sorry for them. We're not, I can't have an impala dirt from my place here, when I work, so, span out in a way.
Missed opportunity.
Do you think they can double the dollar for? Yeah, do we think they can get some bill from the projects we have found next year? Yeah, because then I can go to Austin's, but you're probably.
From what, probably?
No, like a solid hundred, they're going to cut down their road by eight, he said, will they have two feet?
Yeah, I, I missed the question, but, um.
Oh, no, I just want, any contractors next year could call, bill to the, right outside, right, right across from you, that's, that's.
Yeah, I mean, we, you could even, with the contract, with, you can kind of, um, I'd recommend, hey, north by Gutt, it's working with them, really happy to, we'll be half a mile from the site, versus talking, and, so, I'm.
We haven't heard any more, in the, from, right. Councillor Hess, anything further? Okay, uh, just to remind everyone, just in case, you know, pumpkin fest is coming up, uh, this weekend, uh, in the East Range times, hopefully correct dates and times, uh, all sorts of activities for particularly, uh, family members, and, uh, you got large pumpkins, I suppose you can, the contest there, but, uh, much look forward to event, uh, run by the Celebrate Aurora crew. Um, let's see, on the, uh, water board, got a report, uh, we alluded to it in some of the other meetings, but, uh, I hope things on the public session, the fact that, uh, through the efforts of the area elected officials and their lobbyists, uh, they were successful in, uh, enticing or, uh, encouraging the, uh, public facilities authority of the state to, uh, bring, to make a decision that the, uh, water project would be eligible for an additional five million dollars, or up to five million dollars of grant money, which we have fought for, for two years, and the significance of which is that with the new approach that was, uh, arranged with the public facility authority, this, the city and town would give up to an additional five million dollars of, uh, water infrastructure state grant money, to help reduce the, uh, amount of the debt that the city and the town, uh, the town of White are taking on, which, for the benefit of people watching, results in the ability of us to keep our, our water service rates lower than, I think at one time we were projecting we'd go up to like seventy-some dollars per month, more in the category, I believe, of like four, forty-some dollars per month, so, a huge, long-term saving for the, all the water, uh, supply systems and customers, so that, that was the big news going on there. Otherwise, uh, we're continuing discussions with Point Lakes, uh, the, uh, uh, having them join into the joint water project, and as we've discussed in our agenda planning sessions, those actual, uh, physical activities to link the system will probably be delayed to, what, twenty-seven, twenty-eight, someplace in there, but the good news for the project is that, in addition to our current water board giving, taking advantage of the increased water infrastructure grant monies, Point Lakes can access now a greater, uh, portion of that, too, to help them offset their costs and keep their rates much more affordable also, so those are all tremendous, uh, things going on here. Range mayor's meetings, uh, well, number one, the Rams group has been really alerting everybody to a significant, uh, potential, uh, uh, conflict between the pollution control agency, self-aid standards, and, uh, the mining company operations, and, uh, I think Paul Keltier, of that group, was really feeling it's a possibility that it might become economically imfeasible for the, for the mines to function, so, there have been a lot of activities, both on the meters and other communities, trying to, uh, yeah, for to petition the administration, but more specifically the pollution control agency, to set those self-aid levels at a more reasonable level. Um, let's see, there was a very successful state with the range event hosted by the N R R B that some of us went to, that was exceptionally informative, well-presented, and well-founded, but it's nice to go there, uh, there also was a meeting held sponsored by North Spain, uh, the possibility of consolidating the fire departments across the East Range, uh, very, very much exploratory, there wasn't any ground swell of support for it, uh, it's just a question of trying to make sure that if there's an opportunity, it's at least considered, uh, but there are some districts, there are some areas, I think around Gilbert, and, uh, possibly Amulip or something, they're looking at some consolidations there, and, uh, good turnout, good discussion, I thought, that took place, but, uh, city's involved with, uh, contract negotiations with the Forty-Niners, um, let's see, uh, I know the merger, or the acquisition, I think, of Elite was approved this past week, too, right, so that's the big news, uh, but the management there, yeah, Elite has assured everyone that the policies and the, uh, sort of clean energy objectives that are so ambitious for that company, kind of continue, so, I believe that covers all the points I have, so, uh, moving back to the agenda, uh, going to old business, uh, agenda seventeen, the owner on South Sixth Street, do we have any progress on that? Uh, we haven't spoke with the property owners yet, there's some options, um, that are kind of, that we're exploring, there's just, I think, a company through, uh, that we want to at least get our, you know, put the door on, and get the, and the, uh, 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 that, that.
Did you have a one-to-one match, or, we got something, I think they have, I tried to, I, okay, I'm trying to, so, for half, but, something.
Josh, did Jim, generally, he talked with you?
He does.
Okay, we were, this is before the negotiation session, we was chatting about that, he said, a bubbler in that pit, he could really, he'll help keep it, keep it in anaerobic condition, which is hard to smell, it's not a, it's not a long-term solution, but it may.
We did talk about that, so, like, uh, I agree, it's, 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 for, for things, that we're, our filters are still, uh.
Right.
So, I still want to.
So, it keeps it anaerobic, rather than going to anaerobic. Well, uh, so, I take it there's, uh, go action item, uh, seventeen point one, uh, let's see, moving into. Let's see, moving into agenda item eighteen, the business, eighteen point one. The eighteen point one is proposed, resolution twenty twenty-five dash sixty-four, that relates to one of two donation resolutions, is our motion to approve the proposed resolution.
I move to approve the resolution twenty twenty-five sixty-four.
Moved by Councillor Hanson, support.
I'll support that.
Supported by Councillor McLaughlin. Any further discussion?
I just want to say, I'd like to personally thank Rick Turk for spearheading that process of having people donate to the warming shack. He doesn't live in the community, but he played hockey here many years ago, so just a big thank you.
Yeah, no, it's a very general gift too, and obviously then we can assume his fingerprints on some of the other.
So we can all, you know?
We'll have to re-credit for butt raising on some other projects. That's great. All right, we have a motion and support on the table, or on the floor. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I propose. Motion's adopted. Moving into proposed resolution twenty twenty-five dash sixty-five, for the lead another contribution. Is our motion to...
I think the motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five dash sixty-five.
Councillor Hess is for adoption and support by...
I'll support that.
Support by Councillor McLaughlin. And this is to accept, another generous nomination from Richard and Elizabeth Weeden, is it? Uh, let's see.
What question do you need? Does the city automatically send a...
Good point though. All right, any further discussion on the motion? Not all those in favor say aye. I propose. Looking serious. Moving to agenda item eighteen point three, relating to ordinance one seventeen, and for that matter, we move to table eight, twenty twenty-five dash sixty-six. Okay. Right, moving, supported to table the proposed resolution. Further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Propose. Table eighteen point four, proposed resolution twenty twenty-five dash sixty-seven, with power of agreement involving criminal data access that the attorney's spoken briefly before, and just for the benefit of the audience, Councillor, this is just a continuation of the access that we previously had.
Yes, regards to the prosecution, get criminal history access to...
Is there a motion to approve the proposed contract?
Next one.
Moved by Councillor Burkle, supported by Councillor Hess. Any further discussion on that? Seeing now, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Propose. Back in business, criminal data for a while. All right, moving to agenda item eighteen point five, proposed resolution twenty twenty-five dash sixty-eight, relates again to an ordinance matter that Councillor Hess has got to move to the table, right?
I'm gonna make a proposal to table, resolution twenty twenty-five dash sixty-eight.
I'll support that. Supported by Councillor Hanson, moved by Councillor Hess. Any further discussion on that matter? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
I propose. And that matters, table, moving into agenda item eighteen point six, could be try a change order, which the engineer referred to earlier, it's actually a cost savings, right?
I do.
Yes.
I'll make a motion to approve change order.
All right, Councillor Hess has moved adoption of proposed change order, support.
I'll support that.
Supported by Councillor McLaughlin. And any further discussion on that? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Propose. Always nice to see change orders come from the... Say you type. Agenda item eighteen point seven, Melissa Barred edition, is it, is it no straighter or, I don't think it was material to me. Okay, it is in there? All right. No, no, I brought this. In any of that, all right, we have before us just a...
The budget? The budget has been forwarded, I think it was twenty right now. Right for the county review, there was a question on the naming of those regarding the really efficient process or... Generally, I've seen that they're, they're submitted by eight developers, they're more kind of internal, by process at this point.
I think our prior city administrator thought that was a nice closing gesture, to go ahead with that. I have...
Can we disclose it as a public when we say we are not for that and ask for a change of name? At least we consider or ask, like they had a name, the industrial park, Grove?
Well, appreciate the comments, if you can propose, you know, into writing.
Absolutely.
At this point, we're taking action on this already.
The story's been submitted, we're not gonna go through that whole process, we changed the name.
Yeah, yeah.
Seems that parcel's name, nobody knows anything about it, that they should buy a lot there and then give you a lot of cover with that parcel, you'll never see that name again.
Just said somebody did so, like you just thought that that's what you get?
Well, there's, Councillor Hess has a saying, it's out of record, but it's not exactly like a broadcast issue that...
I think we as a public think it should be, like it's in our neighborhood, it's our community.
Well, given this stage of the flat adoption, and as Councillor Hess is pointing out, it's a major effort to go about and refile a amended flat, so...
How big of a deal would it be?
Well, if you want to put up some money to recover the cost, if an attorney, an attorney ...
Again, I try to be transparent, but the community had an opportunity to speak, the planning process was open to the public, when the council approved, proceeded with it to the initial one. Now, again, excuse me then, after the fact, they want to voice a difference of opinion, they had an opportunity to speak in a community conference or that, you know, I don't see going backwards.
All right, so as a matter of information, appreciate your comments on it, I take it you won't be buying a lot.
When was, when was that?
You can check with the administration that tomorrow, this is the time to make that type of inquiry.
All right, no action otherwise required, right? All right, so moving on then to West Industrial Park Edition, is that a similar...
Similar.
Okay, for informational, there's no meme on that, really, that's been industrial park edition to the city of New York? Yeah, very conical on that one. Very conical, okay. All right. Well, it's a nice way you have the opportunity, the flat is actually going on, a major milestone in the community after a while, but we're involved in the, yes. All right, so any comments or concerns from the council on the addition of the flat?
I don't, I don't have any issues on the flat of the West Industrial Park, but once it gets completed, it gets turned over to the Aurora, you mean, exactly, and then we start...
That's my understanding.
We start processing the heat bills and that sort of thing, and we just get out of all the bases that is gonna work out, just correct.
Okay. And there is somewhat of a graph, but I don't quite agree with that. All right, but we do have a bunch of coverage, it's a one, I think, graph model. And we have any left, we'll have a tenant who's going to be able to classify it. Let's see, then I think that includes the discussion of West Industrial Park, moving to agenda item eighteen point nine.
Should we reorder this a bit?
Oh, I'm sorry.
Can we reorder this a bit to listen to, to talk about Levy and Bean Street in that closing meeting, and we've got some people that want to talk with him at the evening about that.
Okay.
I don't know, just throwing it out there.
Council?
I'll make a motion to move item eighteen point nine to the end of the meeting.
I'll support that.
Moved by Councillor Hess, supported by Councillor McLaughlin, move agenda item nineteen nine to the end of the...
Eighteen point nine?
Eighteen point nine, actually...
I'm looking at you and I don't want to...
Yeah, there's a whole series of cascading and limitations.
Right.
So why don't we move, what?
For two, fourteen, twelve.
Nine, ten, eleven, twelve.
Right.
To the end of the meeting?
Yeah.
Okay, and that's okay with you?
Yeah.
All right, so all those in favor of having the agenda, say aye.
Aye.
I propose, all right. And then let's move to, let's see, resolution eighteen point one three, or agenda item, resolution twenty twenty-five sixty-nine, proposed, twenty twenty-six, Levy. We obviously took action to establish that at the last meeting of the council, but this is, I'm sorry, you got a formally document, right? It's a House, yeah, not this one, yeah, right. Yeah, we've never demoed it, reporting it anyway. So is there a motion to adopt the proposed resolution twenty twenty-five sixty-nine?
Make a motion to adopt resolution twenty twenty-five sixty-nine.
Moved by Councillor Hess, supported by...
Support.
Supported by Councillor Hanson. We've already taken the action, any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Propose. Resolution adopted. Let's see, eighteen point one, former Bean Street market.
Do you name Speaker Mr. Mayor and Councilon City Staff? I hear this meeting is reform respectfully request that D.C. clerk be appointed as our projects to gaze on the ITRB. We put some thought into this, to reply, it would be, she's a better, she has a better communication, and maybe a better personality fit, if we reopen the talks with the ITRB. They were stalled previously, some miscommunications, and now we're hoping fresh face, could we reopen the talks, could be spared out.
I thought you were going to go with someone to talk with the HTRB, or is that some executive political shit? Right, I'm just trying to think from the last, it's good and new to you. It's all new to you.
Yeah.
Okay, well, that's, that's fair. Yeah, I think it was brought up in one of our sessions with the Bean Street market folks that they needed to come back to have another discussion, further discussion with the ITRB on funding options, and I appreciate that Deputy Clerk, you have contacts with there, and the city administrator does. I do think that, I'd be glad to go too, for that matter, but the initial, initial responses weren't favorable, the idea is to go back now, try and figure out what obstacles there might be to see funding, and what available money there might be, some access of grant funds. So I think whoever the city wants to send along, the, the, the...
Yeah, I just thought they'd be wrong, I'm sure, but that's why I kind of decide, I mean, I don't want to hold the process up. I've had a number of engagements outside of town, for standard periods of time, so that's my...
I assume the means would be mainly with Ryan and possibly Commissioner or something, is that something that, I'll leave it to the two of you to decide who should, who should go, but it doesn't seem inappropriate for the city to send somebody. I suspect that Mary Flory isn't here, HRA could go, but...
I think that's for a holdup.
I think that's for a holdup, it's... What, I'm trying?
I don't think it's a, a holdup isn't with the HRA, we, holdup is with the HTRB, and we don't think that much.
No, but I do think reaching out, you know, from some arm of the city with the developers could...
And we as developers cannot submit indirectly to the ITRB, it has to go through city organization.
What about, as a company, let's see, someone from Chamber of Commerce? Business community, somewhere.
Alfred, I've talked to someone.
You or somebody else on the Chamber that might be interested?
Great, so let's see, city administrator, it's okay for Lindsey to go along there? So, all right, well, she got a meeting scheduled with them?
It should be sometime, you know, the speaker next week.
How long is your schedule?
I'll go check out the times.
All right, well, so let's appoint Lindsey, is there a council delegate, or I'll make a motion to that, Councillor Hess moves that, Councillor McLaughlin supports, further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Propose. Keep up the good work on the project, so.
Thank you.
Now, I think Deputy Clerk, or Deputy District, now can we move into the closed meeting? All right, we've taken care of that, so, all right, so under agenda item eighteen point nine, it admits the purposes of a personnel issue related to the administrator's contract, Minnesota law, other rights of us to move into a closed meeting status pursuant to Minnesota statutes thirteen point zero three.
Thank you. Thanks. You're good, stop by the eleven. Cool, we'll be open.
All right, and let's see, I think to go into closed session, we need a motion. Moved by Councillor Hanson, supported by...
I'll support.
Supported by Councillor McLaughlin. Any further discussion? If not, all those in favor say aye.
Aye.
So we're moving now into a closed session. I think the attorney can stay, can't you?
Well, they gotta get by, we...
Oh, I see.
I was wondering if you could...